I'll now call this hearing to order. Pete, are there any deletions or additions to the agenda today?
There are no deletions or additions to the agenda.
Thank you. We have two sets of minutes to approve from the special meeting of June 11th, 2019, and the administrative hearing of June 17th, 2019. Commissioners, if there are no changes, I entertain a motion to approve.
So move. Second?
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Commissioners. We have no presentations today. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Justman.
I attended the Colorado Legislative Conference in DC. And we saw a lot of Senator Bennett and Senator Gardner. Some of the people on the program were Senators Tim Scott, Kevin McCarthy from California, Mitch McConnell gave us a talk. Also heard from Chuck Schumer. I think probably my favorite one was Treasury Secretary Monkin. And he gave us an overview of what was going on in DC. Everybody thought one of the most interesting things he talked about was how the American dollar is the currency of the world and how you can use that when you're doing the trade sanctions. I don't think anybody in the room had any idea that the dollar was collected as closely to the trade sanctions as it actually is. Also heard from a political analyst, Charlie Cook. We also heard from various media people. We toured the Supreme Court and had a tour of the US Capitol. That was it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Justman. Commissioner McGinnis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week we had a series of meetings with constituents and they squeaked, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner McGinnis. I had a conference call with Commissioners in Northwest Colorado about the Jordan Cove testimony that we will be giving in Oregon this week. And also spent a lot of time working on my testimony with Stefanie Risi and the Board's testimony to be submitted, which is on the agenda for today. Then I met with Jayanne Schwenke to talk about just some different economic development opportunities and how we can work more closely to make sure that existing businesses are getting the attention that they need to continue to expand in Mesa County. And then I had a meeting with Ray Scott to talk about some legislation that I was thinking about for the upcoming legislative cycle and talk a little bit about the past cycle. I had a call with my co-chair from the state on the Child Welfare Allocations Committee to talk about our next meeting and some different consultants that we're bringing in to do some child welfare work. I had an interview with KJOL on the Tabor question that will be on the ballot in 2019. I had an interview with Colorado Public Radio on the National Popular Vote and where we stand on that. And then I met with a journalist from Denver who is here to talk about the BLM headquarter relocation. So a very busy week, as always. And that's the end of my report. The consent agenda is intended to allow the Board to spend its time on more complex items. These items are generally perceived as non-controversial and can be approved by single motion. The public or Board members may ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration. We have two items on the consent agenda today. Our first item is to approve a grant agreement number 3-08-0027-062-2019. You can tell this is a federal grant. Between the Federal Aviation Administration and the Grand Junction Regional Airport Authority in the amount of $4,910,000 and authorize the Chair to sign and the county's legal counsel to execute the grant offer and cosponsorship agreement. The second item is to approve a Small Community Air Service Development Program grant application in the amount of $950,000 for the Grand Junction Regional Airport to fund a minimum revenue guarantee and provide marketing support for air service from Grand Junction to San Francisco. Commissioners, would you like to remove either of these items from consent to individual?
No.
No.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to remove one of these items? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the two items on the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to approve both items as presented on the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Commissioners. We have several items today on the individual consideration agenda. We ask that the public limit their comments to a minimum of five minutes, to a maximum of five minutes per speaker. New York Day on the dais there, and so just be mindful of the light. The first item today is to approve a letter to Congresswoman Diana Deget regarding Mesa County's opposition to the Colorado Wilderness Act of 2019 and calling on Congress to release all wilderness study areas in Mesa County. We have Amber Swasey, Assistant Management Analyst, to present this item. Thank you, Amber.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Amber Swasey with Mesa County Community Development. Before you today, as mentioned, is a letter to Congresswoman Deget, Mesa County's comments regarding the Colorado Wilderness Act of 2019. This act, in some version, has been proposed in several different versions over the past 20 years. In 2015, Mesa County signed a resolution in opposition of the act and in opposition of additional wilderness within Mesa County. This act calls for 741,000 acres across Colorado to be closed in wilderness. Within Mesa County, that area is over 140,000 acres.
And Amber, did Congresswoman Deget reach out to any of the Commissioners or to any staff prior to introducing this legislation affecting Mesa County when she's a Congresswoman from Denver?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. All right. Before we go, Commissioners, do you have questions? And then we'll go to some comments. Any questions for Amber? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions about this item? All right, Commissioner McGinnis, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, I think we have to understand the significance of a wilderness area, and it's important. And I'd like to go through a few key points for the benefit of those that are viewing or hearing or for those in the audience. First of all, the federal government, obviously, is the largest landowner in the United States. And the land that they have, they've got a very complicated, a very good, and complicated and good management system of the land. And in order to manage this much land and the resources and the assets that those lands have, they designate different lands with different types of uses or different type of management plans. And probably the one that has the least amount of management but still has some oversight, you might find out, in the open areas out in the desert or things like that, and they have basic requirements. Then probably the second most restrictive are the national parks. The national parks are kind of the diamond in the rough, so to speak. But the national parks were designed to have a special place for people to visit, for people to go to and so on and so forth, and see what really is so unique amongst all these millions of acres the federal government owns. And finally, the most restrictive, by far the most restrictive and permanently placed is a wilderness area. Now, there's only one thing under the law that is more restrictive than a wilderness area, and it's a conservation easement in perpetuity. Probably more difficult to get rid of a conservation easement in perpetuity than it is to adjust wilderness area. But wilderness area, when it first came about, was supposed to be designed to protect areas like the peak of the Spanish, up at the top of the Spanish Peaks, which is very unique. And in fact, that's exactly what I did when I was in Congress. We designated that. Unfortunately, over the last 20 years, and Congresswoman Deget is in the lead of this, wilderness areas now become a planning tool or a management tool or a tool directed more by political direction than by the reality of the management of that particular land. Up on the top of the Spanish Peaks, you don't have anybody that lives up there. You have very few people that access that. They're young, they're mountain climbers, they're technical climbers. It's land where you don't find many human footprints. Same thing with a good part of Alaska, that's inaccessible. What's happened, though, is wilderness areas have become kind of a popular thing to put on your political resume. The consequences of wilderness area, you can't do anything in a wilderness area. You can't land a helicopter, you can't go, and now there are some that may have been grandfathered in the early days, but today, the restrictions, not only in the wilderness area but outside the boundaries of the wilderness area, dealing everything with temperature of water that may run into wilderness area, temperature of water that comes out of a wilderness area, I mean, the list goes on and on and on. Most people think wilderness area is an outdoor recreation area. It's not. That land is intended to make sure humans don't go on to it, except under very unique circumstances. We actually had, when I was in Congress, and my memory isn't perfect, but we had, I think it was in Oregon or Washington State, we had a fire, we had three firefighters trapped, and they couldn't get permission to take a helicopter in for a rescue until it went clear to the head of the Secretary of Interior or whichever one had oversight at that time. I mean, it's been taken to exaggerated management style. And unfortunately, in a county like ours, our county is not a county that needs additional preservation or open space. 98% of this county's open space. Now, it may not be open space held by the Sierra Club, but it's open space, meaning we don't have roads, we don't have structures, it's open space. And 98% is a conservative number. That takes all the communities, the roads, the farms, the best we could do it in-house here, calculation. Then we essentially doubled the, excuse me, our calculation of what land is occupied or has structures on it, and doubled that. So even if all the communities doubled, you still have about 98% of our county's open space. Somewhere between 74% and 76% of the county is owned by the government, primarily by the federal government, some by the state, a little by municipalities. 76% of the remaining amount of land, which is about 520,000 acres of private land, about one-fourth of that, or 25% of the private land in this county is now controlled in perpetuity by conservation easements. Now, the conservation easements are, in fact, what's happening for, now we've had a little time under conservation easements. With the technology and management improving over the last 20 years of how to manage land, many groups that were big proponents of making conservation easements absolutely lock-stip and restrictive are now discovering they cannot apply new technology to the management of that land because they're restricted by their own easement they put into place. Conservation easements are being primarily driven right now by politics, number one, big money, big corporations are big money for tax deductions, number two. And maybe distantly down the list are people that truly want to conserve the area. But conservation easements are called the management of the hand from the grave. So one would ask, you know, how, what right do we at this table, or what right does anyone have to tell the future, 100 years from now, 50 years from now, what they should be doing with that land? Had conservation easements, for example, and this leads into wilderness, had conservation easements been in place 20, 30 years ago, you probably wouldn't have Denver International Airport. Had they been in place during the prohibition, you probably wouldn't have wine growing in Palisade because it would have been prohibited in perpetuity. Wilderness areas are very similar. For Diana, the Congresswoman, I know her professionally, I get along with her fine. I can tell you, when I was in Congress, she attempted this wilderness area, you would find that her wilderness area at that point in time accepted out the Denver watershed. So she protected her district from the ramifications of having a wilderness. Now wilderness is such a severe management tool, and in the proper place, it's the proper tool to use. It's a tool out of the tool bag, so to speak. But it is so restrictive that her bill, for example, would, of course, was custom-made so it wouldn't affect the populations of Denver, but it would come out and impact counties like this. This county doesn't need 170,000 additional acres put into wilderness. Now, what happens is wilderness, the president can't put it in like the previous president did with, in Utah, and the previous president before that president did in Utah. What they did is they can make a monument just with a big broad paintbrush. Some of these Congresspeople actually want to make a wilderness area from Montana to Mexico. Now, they think that wilderness is, and soci average person is such a positive word. If you ask people about wilderness, they think of Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts, or when they first went camping with their mom and dad. That's not what it is. So what happens is it has to, it can't be done by the president, it has to receive approval from the US Congress. So what's happened in the meantime is the bureaucracies of previous administrations say, "Well, we may not get a wilderness approved because it's so unique. Let's just say we're going to study the area for wilderness, and let's call it a wilderness study area." So they're able to go in without congressional approval, it's not been approved as a wilderness area. And the way this started was it had no, when I was in Congress, there was no congressional approval of this, no authority. It's just the bureaucracies want to take large swaths of land and say, "We're going to study this in case we should turn it into wilderness." And that's how they're locking up the land. In Mesa County, we have wilderness study areas. They've had plenty of time to study it, we have plenty of management tools in our toolbox. The land that has different levels of protection that need to be implied, for the most part, is followed pretty well by our local federal agencies. But this kind of act has lots of ramifications, and for the future, long after everybody in this room is gone, it will have ramifications on those people that live in this county. And there's, it would be different, and this would require a little, or carry a little more credibility, if in fact that was land out there that was being abused, or if that was land that really needed a different management tool. But the experts had put the right kind of management tool, at least what I can see from the maps that we have, on them. We don't need to go to the most extreme management philosophy and policy that the federal government has available for its federal lands. And I might add that there's a race politically, most of this is driven politically. There's a race to see who can put the most amount of land in the wilderness. Senator Bennett, and is it the Cor Act? What's the, the Cor Act? How many hundreds of thousands of acres they want to put in? Of course, that's all driven, but that all started, in my opinion, with some wealthy people out of Aspen who decided that they didn't want any kind of oil and gas exploration, and it's mushroomed now into this massive wilderness bill. Now, right behind it's another wilderness bill. And behind this will be the next person that wants to seek higher political office or get a bunch of kudos from some radical environmental organizations, so they'll introduce dramatic wilderness area bills. And trying to get, I think, in the history of wilderness areas, there've been a couple congressional acts that have reduced or adjusted the size of it purely for operational purposes. There may have been an error in the description, legal description, but there's been no act of Congress that have taken away or said, "Hey, you know, we need to back off on this wilderness because it wasn't properly thought out." Once it's put into place, just like a conservation easement, it's there in perpetuity. It's going to be very, very difficult, or almost perpetuity, it's going to be very, very difficult. It's pretty easy relatively to put this into place if you have the right politics in line. It's very, very difficult, whether you have the right politics or the right legal system, it's still very difficult to get that designation adjusted for a management tool that more serves the public lands. And when you serve the public lands, by watching out for the public lands, you're serving the public interest. So these kind of bills, we should, justifiably as we have been for a long, long time, very, I guess you'd say conscious about just signing off on these. And we don't sign off on them because we understand the ramifications. And I'll just wrap it up with this. In the early days of my political career, no one imagined that Congress could reach outside the boundaries, or the federal government, excuse me, the federal government would reach outside the boundaries to try and control land they don't already have. And their budget only allowed, the federal government is not, in fact, I just saw a guest editorial in the Daily Sentinel, I think, last week. By these outdoor group, and everybody enjoys the outdoors, of course, they always use the nice buzzwords, about how we're in a crisis, the federal government is giving land to the states, the federal government is shedding valuable land all the time. The federal government is a net acquirer. The federal government does not sell land. The federal government is not giving land to the states. Now, you may have a trade, like up in Vail where they trade 15 acres for employee housing, or you may have a trade here and there, but there is, the federal government is a mass acquire. In addition, most of these conservation easements have third-party rights for the federal government. And when you look at a conservation easement, and this wilderness bill will do the same thing, when you look at conservation easements, one, it's very rare that it's a private property transaction because it usually uses federal money, taxpayers' money. When it uses that, it makes the federal government, and subsequently many agencies of the federal government, have third-party rights in these conservation easements. So there's lots of consequences to this kind of thing. But it's obviously worded, like most legislative bills are, to have real wow, a great appeal. If you took a poll right now in Mesa County, "Do you like wilderness areas? Would you approve wilderness areas?" That's generally how they have these leading surveys. You'd probably get 90% of the people say yes. Would you like it if all of a sudden oil wells were all over our wilderness areas? Of course, 97% is going to say no, or 90% is going to say no. That's the politics behind this. So I appreciate the work you've put into this, I know I've gone on for a while, but I feel very deeply about this. I've studied this subject for decades, and I understand clearly what's going on here. And this is just another effort. And to restrict, to keep areas locked up for decades in study areas, instead of going the proper procedure, going to the Congress, having thorough debate on it, they now just lock it up. They don't have to worry about going to Congress, they don't have to worry about any kind of approval, they just call it a wilderness study area and they lock it up. That's it. I hope we all vote no, I mean, vote yes on this and continue to oppose this type of politically-driven nonsense, in my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner McGinnis, for that very extensive overview of this legislation, and we appreciate your help in understanding it better. Commissioner Justman, you have any comments?
Yes, I find this interesting, this is our annual Congressman Cadet wanting to have more wilderness in Mesa County, she's not our representative, obviously, but this land is, I think the majority of this is all owned by the BLM, that you're not going to see housing go in. It obviously takes any kind of mining or oil and gas production, or if there was any timber, probably not on the BLM to be done. They have roads everywhere, but like if five or six years ago, someone said, "Oh, yes, but if it was declared wilderness in 50 years, the roads would disappear." Well, I'm not sure, after we can still see the Spanish Trail today, but it just locks a lot of people out of it that could use it. And I wonder how many people have inholdings within these areas that they will be getting pressured to, you know, give up your property or make it so restrictive for them that they're more willing to give it up or sell it to the BLM perhaps, or whoever owns the property around them. And it just goes on and on. We want to, on one hand, we want to promote outdoor recreation, on the other hand, let's lock up the land where only the people that can literally hike and walk can use it and the rest of us have to stay home. And then we wonder why we have, you know, some of the fire issues. It's from lack of grazing, when we had livestock out there, a lot of it, and I guess in some of the Dominguez Escalante, some of the ranches up there have, when they turned it into a wilderness, they still gave them the opportunity to use the roads to tend to their livestock and check on them. That was good, but when you have these wilderness areas, or study areas so close to the municipalities, that's another thing that's wrong with it, that we're going to just be locked up from, unless you can walk or ride your horse, you're not going to be able to utilize the land around us. And like I said earlier, the BLM is not going to put a housing development out there, going to put a city out there, I mean, that's a given. So what are they protecting it from, other than excluding people from using the property? More people will get excluded than using it. So we're having an area of limited use for the people that can walk 20 miles a day. I think it's wrong, and it's the wrong approach for our county and these wilderness study areas, we've had some here in Mesa County, they must have been studying them for 20 years. I wonder if they've changed into more wilderness since then? I doubt it. And I wholeheartedly support sending this letter in.
Thank you, Commissioner Justman. I agree with the comments previously made, I don't have anything else to add. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve, Commissioner McGinnis.
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Commissioners. Our second item today is to consider approval of a resolution to adopt a supplemental budget to defray expenses to appropriate additional financing sources and to authorize budgetary transfers between funds or between spending agencies within a fund for Mesa County, Colorado. We have Jeremy Cottle, our Mesa County Budget Manager, to present that item. Thank you, Jeremy.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Jeremy Cottle, Mesa County Budget Manager. This item is a mid-year supplemental budget to appropriate additional revenues and financing sources. The biggest items on this supplemental budget are additional federal revenues, federal grants of $112,000, state grants of a little over $348,000, projected increases in the Public Safety Tax Fund of around $1.1 million, and then additional county funds of $760,000. And the biggest proportion of that is additional Fairbox revenues from our Regional Transportation Office, as well as projected increase in our building inspection revenues, among others. If there are questions about individual items on the supplemental schedules that are attached, I'll do my best to answer those questions. But that's pretty much the summary of what we have here.
Thank you, Jeremy. I have two questions, both related to the Human Services Authorized Staffing Levels, which we're going to talk about next, but I'm trying to figure out how to do this better. But we basically are going to approve the money in the supplemental when we have to still discuss the Human Services FTEs. So I'm wondering if we can pull that out and make that a separate item, along with the staffing levels, also appropriate the money and not do it as part of the supplemental? Can we do that?
I would defer to your legal counsel, but if you were to make a motion to that effect, I could adjust the paperwork accordingly.
Okay. I mean, it's still, I assume it's going to be approved, but it would just be approved separately from the big supplemental. And then my other question was, it talks about a county match for the, for Human Services Fund to fund these new FTEs, but this was supposed to be 100% funding, so why is there a county match?
In the request that the Department of Human Services turned in, they put in the county match of 10%. So it's 90% state revenues and 10% county revenues.
Tracy, you're going to have to help me with this one because the understanding and the presentation to the Commissioners was this was 100% funding, and now we're paying 10%.
Yeah, thank you very much, Commissioner Peculizi. Tracy Garcher, Director of Department of Human Services. So we don't know yet what the county share is going to be. For the previous four years, it has been zero. So in the paperwork that I submitted, we know that the maximum county share that could be associated with this, and this will be when the state finalizes its calculations, could be 10%. We won't know until July, so to be conservative, and this would just be for this last piece of money. So the previous $1.2 million for the previous four years is zero county share, this could be 10%, so that's the way we represented it.
All right. So Acting County Attorney Nina Tencio, I would like to pull this out, and either we can make it a separate item or just in the next item. What is your preference?
I think that's up to the Chair, excuse me.
Well, I always like that answer.
Legally, I don't really think it makes much of a difference, it's up to the Chair. If you choose to proceed with number two and removing the information with regard to the DHS supplemental budget, we would just need to make sure that with regard to item number four on the staffing level, that should that item go forward, that we would include that information in there.
Okay. So Jeremy, I assume for number four, we have already, well, number four, we're going to be including that. Okay. Just kind of walk me through. So in number three, you amended the authorized staffing levels for everybody except for Human Services.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And then did a separate for the staffing levels for Human Services, which you will then add in. So then we'll just add kind of as one, the authorized staffing levels, and then the DHS supplemental funds to fund the nine FTEs, including the county match. 10% county match. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to move... So I'm going to move, okay. So, okay, so Jeremy, you gave your presentation. Are there any further questions, Commissioner McGinnis?
No.
Commissioner Justman?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to discuss this item? Okay. So I'm going to make a motion first that we remove the Department of Human Services supplemental funds to fund potentially nine new federal, full-time employees, including the 10% county match, that we remove that item from this item number two and move it to item number three. Is there a second?
So moved.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Commissioners.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
I believe you wanted to move that to item number four. That's with regard to the DHS staffing level.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting me. So item number four. Do you have any issues with that, Commissioner McGinnis or Commissioner Justman? No? Okay, fantastic. All right. So now we're just on the supplemental without the Human Services portion. If there are no other comments, I would entertain a motion to approve this item.
So moved.
Okay? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Commissioners. All right. Item number three is to adopt a resolution to amend the authorized staffing levels for Mesa County, Colorado. We have Jeremy Cottle, our Budget Manager, to present this item. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yes, thank you. This item is just a, an amendment to our authorized staffing level, and the only changes on here are to the District Attorney's Office to increase their authorized staffing level by two full-time employees. The District Attorney's Office has indicated in their request that this would not require any additional funds. They are going to absorb this in their current budget, and that the impetus for this request is, includes changes in the laws regarding possession of methamphetamine, as well as the need to prioritize and to address high-risk domestic violence cases. So that's a summary of this item.
Thank you, Jeremy. Yes, we had been briefed in advance by the District Attorney on this item, and I don't think any of us had any issues at that time. Okay, any questions, Commissioner McGinnis?
No.
Commissioner Justman?
No.
Okay, anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Commissioners. Item number four is to adopt a resolution to amend the authorized staffing levels and to include a supplemental for funds to fund the nine full-time employees that are requested by the Department of Human Services, including a 10% county match. And we have Jeremy Cottle, Budget Manager, to present this item. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yes, excuse me. Madam Chair, this is a request from the Department of Human Services to increase their full-time employee authorization by nine FTEs to supplement their child welfare programs. As Mr. Garcher just noted, this would be funded by a projected state grants of $308,000 with a projected county match of approximately $34,000. And then on the schedule where we break this out, we have the FTEs listed as 8.1 outside-funded FTEs and .9 county-funded FTEs based on that match. And that's a summary of this item.
Say that again?
Yes. On the, on the authorized staffing level schedule, we have the Department of Human Services, an overall nine FTE increase, and the way that's broken out is 8.1 that are outside-funded and .9 that are county-funded.
And the .9 is because of the county match?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Jeremy. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay. I'm going to bring it back here. And so my issue with this has nothing to do with Human Services. I think that they are going to adequately appropriate these additional FTEs to help front-load services, which I think is really important. It's consistent with the new federal legislation under Families First Act. My issue is adding nine new full-time employees to this organization is a lot of people all at once. And this is only one year of funding, one year. There is no guarantee that once we start up these programs and get them running, that those nine FTEs will stay. And when you look at all of the state obligations and how they are going to be able to fund those obligations, whether it be, you know, all-day kindergarten, or there's going to be, we all know, after this mine springs issue, there's going to be a huge push for more money for mental health services. The state budget can only handle so much. They're hoping this Tabor question will get on the ballot, well, it will be on the ballot, will pass, and that's how they plan on making up for some of the potential shortfall in the budget. And then there's the attack on oil and gas, which will have significant impacts on Mesa County and Mesa County's budget going forward. And so unless we get a carve-out for the Western Slope, we are going to be in a bad position, as will the state. And so I am not, I'm just not confident that this money will be here next year, and I'm concerned about starting up programs and not having the bodies to fill those programs. I've had significant conversations with the Human Services Director. He understands my concerns. Again, this is not in any way a slight on our people. I think we are doing the best we can with the resources we've got, and I understand that, you know, if they think they can get this money in this year, we should get it and hope for the best next year. I guess I'm just not as hopeful. So I just, I can't bring myself to approve this item, but I am glad that it's been brought forward. So any further comments, Commissioners? Commissioner McGinnis?
Thank you. Well, the way things are going anymore, especially with the budgets and things like that, is, you know, whether it's PILT payments or whether it's the Job Corps, two weeks ago, it didn't look like any funding. We were going to shut the Job Corps down. Same thing with PILT. Every year, everybody panics, although I forget, I think 90-some percent of the counties in the United States get PILT. It's not going to be canceled. I was confident that the Job Corps was not going to be canceled, but you know, if you go based on, you know, well, we're not confident that the funding for the Job Corps is not going to be there next year, so let's not approve additional positions they may need. I'm afraid we're going to find ourselves not approving much of anything because we're, nobody wants to make a bet on the future. And so I think in this case, on Human Services, and the Chair and I agree on this, as I'm sure John, that the services, that these are needed. I think the key thing here, and I would agree with the Chair, other than the fact that our Head of Department of Human Services has advised us that anybody hired under this is clearly aware of the fact that if their job's dependent on these grants being renewed, if they're not renewed, they lose their work. And that makes it a little more difficult to find employees, but I'm still confident we'll be able to find people to fill those positions. This is, I am no expert in Human Services, and don't pretend to be, and it's not my primary focus. So I rely very heavily on what our Head of Department of Resources, Department of Social Services tells us. He thinks these positions are, can be utilized, thinks they're necessary. He's advised us that all employees that are hired under this program will be advised, these nine employees, or whatever it is, nine or 10, will be advised, if you lose your appropriation, you're out. And he's advised us, he thinks the positions are needed. I think we all agree with him. I mostly agree with the philosophy of the Chair. However, in this kind of case, we're, look, buyer beware. We want you to go to workforce, but we're dependent on this grant. If we don't get the grant, you don't have a job. In the meantime, I think it's worth the bet. I think the money will be there next year for this because of the critical nature of it. So I support the request by the Department of Human Services.
Thank you, Commissioner McGinnis. Commissioner Justman?
I have the concerns like Commissioner Piglisi talked about, but on the other hand, we can adjust the FTEs next year, I would say, if it needs to be, and they get hired with, you know, if the money's not in there next year. And even if we don't have the money, next year comes and we're short of money, I mean, there's times when FTEs have to be cut, so I would think these would be some of the first I would have to go if we don't get the funding like we're supposed to get this year. I guess I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution to amend the authorized staffing levels for Human Services, including supplemental funds to fund nine additional full-time employees, including a 10% county match.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm opposed, so it's a 2-1 vote on that one. Thank you. And then our next resolution is to adopt a resolution of the Mesa County Board of County Commissioners opposing Colorado's proposed zero-admission vehicle rule. It says county commissioners. I thought County Attorney Coleman was going to present this, forgetting that he is not here today. So just, Amber, do you want to, is Amber still here? Do you want to just give us an overview of this resolution, please? Did you, oh, you didn't do this one, did you? Yeah, never mind. Okay, I'm on it. And I do know that we've got some people in the audience. Thank you for being here and being so patient. So basically, Governor Jared Polis signed an executive order which directed the Colorado Department of Public Health and the Environment to develop a rule establishing zero-admission vehicle program to support electrification of transportation and to propose this program to the Air Quality Control Commission. This is a very similar program as California has established, and this seems to be moving forward, but will have some significant effects on our, obviously, our automobile industry and also on the people who use vehicles right now. We also are very concerned about agriculture and manufacturing and some of the other industries that we have here, and want to make sure that we are protecting them in any way that we can. So we felt this resolution was very important and necessary to make Mesa County's concerns heard. Most importantly in this resolution is the fact that there will only be one, one hearing on this issue that is obviously on the Front Range in Glendale, Colorado. I don't even know where that is, but apparently it's somewhere on the Front Range. And so yet again, the voices of Mesa County and the Western, and the Western Slope are not being considered at all. And so through this resolution, we are also demanding that a public hearing happen in Mesa County, in Grand Junction, to fully allow the participation of West Slope citizens and make sure that we are engaged in this rulemaking process. And so that is part of our resolution. Are there any other Commissioners, comments from the Commissioners before I open it up to public comment? Commissioner McGinnis?
I completely agree with you. And the ramifications of this, first of all, we're, I mean, at this point, they're on a mad rush to shut down electrical generation plants that are generated by coal or natural gas. And right now, we can, the electric needs that we have in the state, we can, you know, we generate a lot of it inside the state, but we're very quickly moving into a situation where we're going to pay an exaggerated price because we're going to have to buy it out of state. There's going to be a lot of competition. So that's the basic question. But the other one is, it's just not feasible. I mean, you can't go out there and power a tractor now in this community where we have something that appears feasible, although I'm not sure the net cost really truly works out. But we did, as a county, with the city, and we have a good partnership with the city, engaged out at the landfill, which we operate, state-of-the-art operation, and we take gas from that, and that's how we generate or power some of our buses. Our buses are very expensive. Those are, they require lots of, they don't require the kind of mechanical maintenance necessarily, but nonetheless, we're trying to do our part where it's feasible. It's expensive, it's feasible. We're kind of a pioneer, as they say. Pioneers usually get shot and butchered, so, but we're a pioneer in that area. We can't afford, Colorado can't afford to be ahead of California on this proposed rule. We'll get butchered. And the people of the state will, right now, have relatively moderate gasoline or fuel prices. We have vehicles that we can do our agriculture, and out here, I mean, in fact, the Commissioners just got a four-wheel-drive vehicle because of the passes and things like that. And it's not broken, and we should all move towards a quote-unquote "greener" future. We all agree with that. But you've got to have common sense. And this resolution, that's the factor that resolution's missing, is common sense. And they say, when you say, well, what if? And they say, well, we'll always work out the what ifs. If we don't go ahead and move a goalpost that's so unachievable, then people won't do anything about it. So let's make it unachievable and then let the future generations worry about the what ifs. And I get a little of that, but it's gone way overboard, and I think that what we're attempting to do here is in order. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner McGinnis. Commissioner Justman, any comments or questions?
Like Commissioner McGinnis talked about agriculture, the people out on the ranch have need for heavy equipment to move their livestock to market. The peach growers depend on large trucks to haul their peaches out of here. And I mean, I understand what they're trying to do, this utopia, I guess we'd say, but it's way ahead of its time to be practical. In the big city, yes, you can maybe go to electric cars if everybody can afford to do that and do it. But in Western Colorado, where people live sometimes 50 miles from the, out of Grand Junction, the ranch, or if they live down at Fruitland, you're an agricultural producer, there aren't any solar or wind-powered tractors out there that I've heard about. And the large semis, I saw, you can get an electric semi, but I don't know if it was somebody that yesterday on, somewhere on Facebook, or whatever, $100 million, if that was a factual number. If that's a factual number, that is, maybe the government can have some test-run trucks to do that, but the trucking industry certainly can't afford to spend that kind of money for an electric thing, or car, or truck. So I support this item wholeheartedly.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner McGinnis. I'm sorry, Commissioner Justman. All right, is there anybody, I know that there are people in the audience, Mr. Fucow, come on up. Just introduce yourself for the record and introduce anyone else that you have with you that you'd like to...
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. I'm Bob Fucow, Fucow Motors. I have with me Tim Jackson. He's the head of the Colorado Auto Dealers Association, and he would like to speak on it, and then I'd like a couple minutes after he's done, so.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair and members of the Commission, and it's great to be with you, and I first want to start by commending you for your public service. I know you've put a lot of time into these positions, and that's what you're here for, but you do a great job at it, and you're a great team, so. Want to talk to you about the, first off, on the zero-emission vehicle standard, it was stated in the opening comments by Commissioner Piglisi that it would be modeled after California. It's actually the exact California model, because it's the only option that Colorado or any other state has if they don't want to stay connected to the federal model. Here are some of the challenges with it, and before I get to the challenges, let me just be very clear, we're not against electric vehicles, electric vehicles when, or any type of zero-emission vehicles. When the time comes and when the technology develops, they may be a practical solution for you, for us, for everybody, and that will be great when it happens, if it happens. But right now, the challenges on EVs for Coloradans, for Americans, for people right here in Mesa County are multifold. One is the higher cost going in, so on average, an electric vehicle that would be equipped the same as an internal combustion engine-powered vehicle of its size will cost a premium of around $10,000 to $15,000. The optimum industry number is about $12,000. Now, as you may know, the federal government has been subsidizing that purchase of EVs to the tune of about, to the tune of $7,500 for all EVs. That eventually goes away by manufacturer when they hit 200,000 vehicles. But the state of Colorado has an additional $5,000 on the hood of each of these vehicles. So when you add that up, let's say in some of the prominent EVs that are in the marketplace, a Nissan Leaf, a Chevrolet Bolt, a BMW i3, or say, or Tesla, any of the Tesla models, would have a $7,500, and it's going away on Tesla because they've hit their 200,000, but it's now 3750, and on July 1 becomes half of that, I think, 1,875. But let's say with the ones that still have it, the Nissan Leaf, $7,500 plus a $5,000, that's $12,500 on the hood of each of those. Keep in mind that the Chevrolet Leaf and the Chevrolet, I mean, I'm sorry, the Nissan Leaf and Chevrolet Bolt, and now Bolt... Leaf and Chevrolet Bolt, and now Bolt, have been in the marketplace since 2011. So it's been an option, right here in Mesa County, right here in Grand Junction, right here at Bob Fucow's stores and other dealerships in Grand Junction, but the pickup rate on those is still less than 3% of the overall sales of cars. So first is the cost going in. Second is range anxiety. The distance a vehicle can char, can travel on that charge. The third is the amount of time that it takes to recharge, and Bob's going to have a story for you here on, that puts out in, in reality. And so those are just some of the, some of the challenges. A fourth may be cost, and it was stated by Commissioner McGinnis earlier about fleet transportation buses. RTD in the Denver metro area is now running fully electric buses on the 16th Street Mall. Those buses cost about eight to 10 times what a, a traditional natural gas bus or diesel bus would cost, but they were predicted to get their, their upfront costs, their capitalization costs, through lower operating costs. Come to find out, because they're having to charge, recharge the batteries at peak electric tons, it's actually costs more to, to operate the electric buses than it does the natural gas buses. So there's, we've got a lot of progress to make, a lot of that's on battery technology. The batteries that are powering these vehicles today are lithium, they're mined lithium. There's only three places in the world that you can mine lithium, and I believe those are Africa, China, and certain places in South America. Now, there are stories coming out of those places, there was a New York Times story last week, that there's environmental problems just on the mining of the lithium, the communities are having water problems where they've been mining lithium downstream. So there are some source problems on the technology as well. But let's go to the consumer demand. With, even with $12,500 on the hood of each of these vehicles, Colorado consumers only buy them at a rate of less than 3%. That doubled in 2018, before that it was 1.5%, but why is that? What do people, what do Colorado consumers and Mesa County consumers buy and drive? And I've got that for you right here in where we've divided passenger cars versus light-duty trucks. Light-duty trucks are pickups, vans, and SUVs. Eventually, maybe they will be electrified, you can't buy many of those today. But here in Mesa County, first quarter 2018, 74.9% of the vehicles purchased in Mesa County fell in that light-duty truck category. So only 25% were passenger cars, that would be the Leaf, the Volt, the Bolt, the i3, and others. So Colorado consumers are buying light-duty trucks at a much faster pace than passenger cars and, and, and internal combustion engines, even with incentive, being incentivized otherwise, to the tune of 97%. And I think that those are some of the problems. By the way, we're all for cleaner air and, and improving the environment. New car dealers in Colorado created a nonprofit foundation to take the old high-emitting cars off the road. New cars today, internal combustion engine, whether they're gasoline, diesel, electric, hybrid, plug-in hybrid, or any other power source, everything we sell today, and this is most untold story, I think, in automotive journalism, and that is, that everything we sell today is 99% cleaner on tailpipe emissions, reduced by 99%. This is the EPA numbers, not the industry numbers. 99% cleaner than anything we had available for sale just 20 or 30 years ago. So if we're really interested in cleaning up the air, as far as the air we breathe, reducing particle emissions, which are the brown cloud inducing, asthma contributing, ozone enhancing emissions, we need to move people to newer, cleaner cars. On the carbon emissions, which is really what this debate comes down to, the CO2 emissions, those are actually clear, and we, we're not 99% improved, but we're about 30% improved just in the last 12 years. So the average fuel economy of the new cars is 30% better than just 12 years ago. So new car dealers recognize that if we want to improve the environment when it comes to automotive and mobility, that we need to retire the, the aging fleet, move those people, if we can, to newer, cleaner cars. They don't have to be brand-new cars. We'd love to sell them a brand-new car if they're ready to buy it, we can tell you that. But we created a nonprofit foundation to take the high-emitting cars off the road and recycle them. Think of it as cash for clunkers without the cash, because there's no cash given on these, but we take those on trade, we turn them into the foundation, the foundation turns them into auto recyclers, which can sell parts off the cars, but not the engine, the transmission, or the, the body and the shell, and then everything else can be recycled. The cars are the most recycled product in America today, and 84% of a car is recyclable. We take the funds out of that, and this is just a sidebar benefit, just for your knowledge and, and, and understanding, we take the value of those, which is only about $200 to $300, but we've recycled over 4,000 of those today, and roll them into scholarship funds for autotech students. And some of those funds have gone right here to Mesa County schools and Mesa County students to get them into autotech careers, which can pay 60, 70, 80, or $100,000. It's the only program like it in the country, so we're interested in improving air quality, but doing it in a rational and really a sane way. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Bob Fucow also, one of our member dealers, who sells Cadillacs and GMCs and Hondas, has a few comments as well.
If we might have a chair.
Do you want to ask some questions?
Tim, just real quick.
Okay.
First of all, Tim, it's mid-June, you go on your typical 400 or 500-mile bike ride you always do?
I did that just week before last, yes.
It's good to see you again.
It's quite an adventure.
Thanks for coming to Grand Junction, appreciate it. And done a great job over the years with the Automobile Association. One, I think the key here is just common sense. Nobody wants dirtier air, everybody wants cleaner air, everybody wants more miles to the gallon, everybody, however, is very dependent on being able to have vehicles that have power, that, and, and we'll get there, and we should get there, but we can't get there in the time periods that they put out. And, and the only way that you, what they'll start to do is, once they figure out, the government, once they figure out we're not going to make those goals, then they'll start doing like they do worldwide with EU and so on. Let's put punitive taxes on people that still have trucks or tractors or things like that, because since they can't get there with this quality, we're just going to, let's just fine them out of business. That's the difficulty, if we don't start to put the ingredient of common sense into it. It's interesting when we were speaking about electric, and I'm all for electric cars in due time, with the right kind of technology, but the, the new fad is, is now airplanes and the amount of carbon that airplanes kick off, and that there's a push for battery-operated aircraft. And I saw the other day where one of the, an aircraft, somebody bonked somewhere, one of these, some expert said, "Think about it. You can take off with those big, heavy batteries, but you can't land with those heavy batteries because the landing gear will collapse." It's like, it's like the military aircraft, the refueling aircraft, they have to, that refuel other planes. They can take off, but they can't land with the weight they've got, because everything, the gear will collapse on them, so they have to dump fuel before they're able to land again. And, you know, just common sense, the weight that it's going to add to that airplane. So as the technology with batteries and things like that advances, we're going to get to the point everybody wants to get to. But again, I'm concerned, we, we want to be a pioneer like California, and the people that are going to suffer are the people of Colorado. Now, some will say, "Well, they're not going to suffer, we're going to have cleaner air." Well, frankly, we may clean our air a little bit more, but the dirty air is still going to blow in on us, and it just doesn't make sense if we don't put common sense in its place. So I appreciate you coming over, and I think your inputs are valuable.
Got a quick response to that, if I can, and I totally agree with you. In fact, you are spot-on on the penalty for the full-size pickup van or SUV, because this in fact does that. So if each manufacturer by brand and, and automaker supplier into the state of Colorado doesn't achieve these California dictated, and keep in mind, they, these are established by an appointed commission by the governor of California, and we, we don't have an option to amend them, we have to either take them in whole or, or not take them. So the Colorado-appointed commission is going to adopt the California-appointed commission's standards, and in that is, it does just what you said, it penalizes those that are buying the pickup vans and SUVs. So at 75% here in Mesa County, 74.9 to be exact, are driving off in a brand-new pickup or probably an SUV, and it's not electric, there's going to be the opposite, it's going to be, instead of an incentive, a disincentive. 300 to 500, or maybe as much as 3,000 to 5,000, according to some studies, will be added on to the price of the SUV to discourage the consumer from buying that, which would hopefully encourage them to buy the electric vehicle. But some people can't use the electric vehicle, so we think if the Colorado consumer, and this is a Mesa County consumer as well, can't buy or afford their next new car that, or truck that they want or need, they'll stay in their older, higher-emitting cars that they're currently driving. And by the way, that worked for Cuba pretty well for about 50 years, they didn't get any new cars for 50 years, so they kept the old, high-emitting cars on the road.
And Tim, I might add that, and you're spot-on there too, but I might add that they said, "Well, we'll take care of agriculture." Heavy trucks aren't just used for agriculture. I mean, you just walk outside here and you'll see a power truck or a concrete truck going on, or ambulances, or our fire trucks, or, you, you have to have heavy-duty trucks that have power. So what they'll try, what I think they'll maneuver on this, say, "Well, now agriculture, we're not going to harm agriculture, but we just want to get the other trucks." Well, the other trucks perform very vital and important duties that aren't going to be able to be done in a little two-door Datsun, as they tried to do in the '70s. That's what was going to replace the four-wheel drive, and then they figured out real quickly, it's not working. So again, back to common sense, but thank you for bringing that point up on the...
It's cap and trade for cars, that's what it is, cap and trade.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Justman, do you have a question?
It's like Commissioner McGinnis talked about, seeing how City Market doesn't have a warehouse in Grand Junction, everything gets trucked over from Denver, Safeway, it all comes with fossil-fuel-powered trucks. And another thing that really intrigues me is, I asked Governor Hickenlooper a couple times, "What about road tax on electric cars?" You never hear another word, "So we're going to beat all electric and the roads are going to fix themselves on their own?" I mean, this doesn't make any sense to me. And I, somebody had, somebody, a friend of mine told me, he thought they saw a Tesla on a tow truck, so, I mean, I'm a, but I don't, I don't believe there's a, I don't know if there's a Tesla dealer in the Western slope or not, and these are mechanical devices that are going to need to be worked on. So if you have a Tesla, do you have to take it to Denver or to Salt Lake or to a large city to probably get it repaired, I would assume? And there's probably some, I mean, some things maybe that you could get done, but if you get into the technical part, and, and it just is mind-boggling to me that we can, you talked about the mining, I mean, I've seen stories of the horrific conditions that get this lithium, and we're going to be at the mercy of the rest of the world that supplies these raw materials that we don't have. And that doesn't look to me like it's going to work out that well. And then, I believe they passed it into legislature, I'm on Excel, and so I'm going to get, at some point, pay a surcharge so they can pay for charging stations and the charging of electric cars, and if you can't afford $100,000 on Tesla, I think you'll pay for your own charging bill, not me.
That's an excellent point, and in fact, one of the stories Bob's going to communicate is the challenge on a Tesla that came into, into his store on this very, on this very issue. So you're exactly right, if a Tesla needs char, I mean, it needs repaired, if they're going to have to get it to Denver or Salt Lake City, where the closest repair centers, and oh, by the way, they won't make it there on a single charge. So Bob's got a story for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I tell my Tesla story, I just want to say, you know, I'm a truck driver, I have a pickup, I'm 6'4", I don't fit in cars. That's, I mean, that's the bottom line. And so the pickups today, half-ton pickups getting 24, 25 miles per gallon, three-quarter ton pickups with diesels getting over 20 miles per gallon. You compare that to 30 years ago, I remember somebody asked me one time, 30 years ago plus, what kind of field economy I got, and I said, "I get 20 miles per gallon, I get 10 on the highway and 10 in town." I mean, that's the progress that we've made with technology. When we make the new vehicles so expensive that people can't replace those old, high-emitting vehicles, we're, really aren't helping ourselves. So agricultural story, I pull up in my pickup next to a guy in a Prius, and he very proudly says, "I get better field economy than you do." And I said, "Yes, but I'd like to see you put 25 bales of hay in the back of your car." So my Tesla story, we built a new Nissan store in 2012, and not long afterwards, we have a charger on the side of the building, and I'm down there and I see this Tesla parked, charging his car. And I thought, "That's interesting," because, you know, I'm paying for charges, $100,000 Tesla, but that's okay. So I talked to him, I said, "I see you got a Tesla?" And he said, "Yeah." And I said, "Where'd you come from?" He said, "Denver." And I said, "Well, did you make it all the way over?" And he said, "No, I had to stop in Vail." And, and then, I said, "Well, how'd you know we had a charger?" And he said, "Well, you're on a national register of charging stations." I go, "Really? I don't remember signing up for that, but that's okay." So bottom line is, there isn't a charging station that you want to pass up. A 120-volt charger takes about eight to 12 hours to charge a car. A 220, which is what we have, is two to four hours, and then the 440s are the 20-minute chargers. So unless you've got access to a 440 charger, you better plan on spending a couple hours to charge your car. Another electric vehicle story, and this is a little different, I have a friend with a ranch up on Pinion Mesa, and he has leases out to hunters, and they, one year they brought out a Bad Boy Buggy. And Bad Boy Buggy is an electric four-wheel-drive golf cart. And they said, "Use it, you know, till we come hunting." And so we were up there one time, and we went one side of his ranch and got back about halfway and ran out of battery. So we had to be towed back. Well, his hunters came in about two weeks later, and it was cold, it was snowing, they made it a quarter of a mile in the mud and snow, ran the battery out, had to take a little portable charger out, charge it overnight so they could turn around and get it back. So I can imagine somebody going up on top of Grand Mesa in the wintertime, running out of juice, what are you going to do? You either call a tow truck, or you carry a generator with you so you can charge it. So anyway, that's my story, appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fucow. All right, if there's no further questions, I'm going to ask if there's anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item. Bob, come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bob Ervish, and I'm here to support the county in saying we don't want to be a part of a forced-upon-us electric vehicle. I have to say that I do have electric vehicles. I've got a Prius that I bought in 2005, excellent vehicle, but whole different element than what we're talking about, because it really is, it really is powered by fossil fuel. The benefit of that vehicle is it gets a, it gets a lot of miles per gallon, 50 miles per gallon is, is what we get off of it, it's a travel car. Makes sense, that makes sense. Also have a golf cart I use around the, around the house. Makes sense. In essence, the electric vehicle makes a lot of sense, but the technology is not here yet. I just ordered a couple batteries, lithium, they're lithium-ion phosphate batteries. The one battery I've got, I can hold in one hand, it weighs three and a half pounds. It gives the same power as what I've got in a 36-pound battery in my, in an airplane. It's, it's absolutely, totally amazing. But when you look at what we need to support that, this kind of energy, we have to have an electrical generating system that is going to generate a lot more power than what's available right now. And I'm not aware of any new power plants being permitted in the state of Colorado. Is there anybody here? So where is our, where's our additional wattage coming from to support these vehicles? And on top of that, I resent something being forced down my throat. We are a capitalistic society, and one of the beauties of a capitalistic society is those that make the most efficient, effective, attractive products, sell them. And if you can't sell these vehicles against what exists right now, then we are...
And if you can't sell these vehicles against what exists right now, then we are not ready for them. Because we have made such a tremendous increase in gas mileage and efficiency in reducing our consumptions. And one of the problems we have now is we're selling less and less gas, so we have less and less taxes available for our, to repair our roads. And we're seeing, you know, we're seeing that, but that's a direct response of what we've been able to do. I believe electric vehicles will be something that we will, I probably won't see them in my future, but other people will see them, because we're making strides on them. They're simple. They're an electric motor, not complicated. Don't have pistons, rods, or any of that stuff that breaks. There's just no maintenance on them, so that makes sense. I don't want them forced down our throat. I want to see them hit the competitive market. I want to see them stand on their own two feet. There's no sense in really even talking about them, like we said, until we have the, until we have the generating power to support them. We don't want to be a California. We don't want to have brownouts. And there's another thing, element of this, that I just absolutely, that I loathe. California, right now, is a state that is dysfunctional, totally dysfunctional. You look at their human, their human problems that they've got on the streets and everything else, and there's nothing about the state that is functional. They're bankrupt, and to take something that comes out of California and hold it up as a standard just makes me ill. Anyway, that's just my view. I thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? All right. We will close the public comment section and take any further comments by commissioners, if there are any, any further comments.
I have. Thank you, Madam Chair. Of course, what we have to be careful here is that this, what we've done about here doesn't just focus on the electric vehicle. And what'll happen is, they'll spin it and try and say, "Well, anybody who opposes this opposes electric vehicle." That's not true. It's the, it's the fine language or the, in the bill, in the proposition, to follow what California does. And as Tim noted specifically, the fines that are going to be, that are deployed with the fine print in this proposal in California, we've got to look, because the average person out there is going to be sold on this by saying, "Are you for cleaner air?" That's exactly how this is going to be sold. "Are you for cleaner air?" Of course, we all are going to say, "Yes." That's how they're going to spin this. When we get into the consequences of the fine print of what California now requires of their citizens, the people of this state will be, it will be punitive to the people of this state. And the consequences will be economic consequences. Of course, the very wealthy people won't even be impacted, but it's a lot of consequences. And, and we will notice a huge void of common sense. They didn't put it in California, usually, as Bob has said, California's not a state that generally, that, he didn't say it specifically, but inferred, in the state that follows common sense, in regards to this kind of thing. We're going to pay a heavy price for this, but it's going to be sold, and it's being sold by the current administration for cleaner air. Let's get ahead of California, be what California's doing. Now, the federal government has put into place, here's what we want to see hap, this is over and above. The only way you can get out of what the federal government's saying is you go to stricter standards, higher penalty, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. California, I think, is the only state's done that, and now Colorado needs to be in there. It's got a lot, it's just lots of consequences, and I, but it's going to be hard to educate the public and say, "Look, there's a lot. You know what? The front of this is cleaner air. We're all in it. You better read the fine print." Thank you, Madam Chair.
I agree. Thank you, Commissioner McGinnis. Commissioner Justman?
The big wildfire in California, I just, over the weekend, heard on the radio or TV about, the pollution that that fire put out was worse than 30 years of vehicle pollution. And if they really wanted to have clean air, we'd be looking at our forests and do a better job of managing our, our national forests, including the forest and the wilderness areas. But if you, what we just talked about earlier, you can't go, you can't go harvest any timber in the wilderness area, because that's not allowed. And yet, we get these fire pollution, and we've had it last summer was bad, and hopefully this year, as wet as it's been across the country, hopefully, we won't get that, the smoke from California and Oregon and Washington, and even Utah and Nevada, the last, that we've gotten the last few years. So, in that respect, and like Commissioner McGinnis said, we all want clean air, but you have to have some reason to it, or some logic to it, that will electric cars ever work? I think they will someday. I mean, I've heard about electric cars for probably 60 years of my life, that they talked about electric cars were going to be the wave, but it was already supposed to have happened in the predictions in those days. And obviously, we are much closer than we've ever been, but I have a hard time believing that it's going to work for the overwhelming majority of the population of the country. Maybe in the big cities, maybe they should try that first, let the people, the folks in the big city, and I can see where you could drive back and forth to work 40 or 80 miles one-way, or whatever it is. But you have to get used to, and you can adjust to that, I'm sure, but when it takes two hours or four hours, if you pulled into the gas station and fueled up your car, and it took four hours, I think there'd be an uproar. So, yet, I think in cases, that will work for people, perhaps, but it's certainly, at this point, not going to work for the overwhelming majority of the citizens of Mesa County.
Thank you, Commissioner Justman. I agree with the comments that were made. Part of the issue that I have is the fact that there's only going to be one public hearing, and it's going to be on the front range. I mean, if we're adopting these standards straight out of California's playbook, then it doesn't even matter, because then nobody's going to listen to us. And the fact that, yet again, the Western Slope is being ignored, and yet again, we are not going to have any say into these, these burdens that are going to be placed on our constituents, and especially our businesses. I mean, here, we are working really hard to generate economic development opportunities for Mesa County, to diversify our economy, but this will have extremely negative impacts on our mining, our manufacturing, our oil and gas, and agriculture. And those are our major industries in Mesa County. And so, for all of those issues, I agree that we should move this resolution forward. I do have two minor edits when, when this gets stamped. The last whereas, there should be a period at the end, not a colon, and it should be dated for today. But other than that, those minor changes, I think that we should move forward. Would the commissioners entertain a motion, please? Or I would entertain a motion. Go ahead.
I'd make a motion, we approve the resolution, and if you have a minor changes to it, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Justman. Commissioner McGinnis, do you second that?
I do.
I'm in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you both for being here today, and I think Mr. Urbish left, but we really appreciate your comments in helping to educate us and our public, so thank you. And then, our last item today is to consider submitting a comment letter to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission regarding the draft environmental impact statement for the Pacific Connector Gas Pipeline LP and Jordan Cove Energy Project LP. I will just quickly present this item. We've had many discussions around the Jordan Cove project and the importance that it will have to Mesa County and our operators, and being able to export our natural gas resources to places like Japan, mostly is where we're working right now. But when we talk about cleaner air, China burns dirty fuels and puts them into the air, which eventually will affect our air quality in the United States as well. And so, the opportunity to have an export facility will help stabilize our economy for 20 years plus, and also help us to continue to diversify the economy. Commissioner Justman and I will be leaving tomorrow to go to Oregon to testify before the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission on the Jordan Cove project and its importance to Mesa County and to Northwest Colorado, along with Commissioner Rector from Rio Blanco County and Commissioner Jan Kafsky from Garfield County. This letter that is before us today is a very technical letter. It does, it has some reflection on the things that we've talked about, but it's more a technical comment letter for the draft environmental impact statement. I know my comments, and Commissioner Justman can talk about his comments, will have a few minutes to testify before the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission on Wednesday, and my comments will focus on the economic impacts to Mesa County and the importance of this project, again, for stabilizing our economy for over 20 years. It'll also focus on, basically, the moral case for energy development, lifting people out of poverty by the ability of exporting natural gas resources to some of those communities in India and Eastern Europe. And then also, from the environmentalist perspective, cleaning up, you know, other countries' air quality issues by exporting clean natural gas to them is really important. And then, from a geopolitical standpoint, on helping to stabilize our allies overseas, and, you know, especially when we talk to people in Eastern Europe, where Russia continuously shuts off their gas for political reasons, we have the ability in Mesa County, Colorado, to export our natural gas resources to these countries and help to free them from Russian control, and I think that that's really important. So, that'll be the basis of my testimony. Commissioner Justman, do you want to talk about your testimony?
No, but my comments aren't allowed. I can remember going to energy meetings in the late '90s, when people looked, literally stood up there and talked about how we were going to be out of oil in the U.S. by 2007, and, "My God, what are we going to do?" And 2007 came, and guess what? By that time, some industry people came up with directional drilling, and then it was fracking. And I think the environmental community was really wanting to get rid of coal, because they were quite certain that there was not enough natural gas could be produced to replace the coal and would be forced into green energy. And lo and behold, today, we are, have more natural gas than we know where to go with. The Piceau Basin went up nine or 10 times of what the original assessment was, and the gas is at a, you know, about $2.50 or less for whatever, however they sell it. So, and we have a, and it's a clean burning fuel. And that's why the demand in China, they want, or China, Japan, they want to get away from their nuclear reactors and go to natural gas. The Jordan Cove thing is, the location is an excellent location. They can get to Japan quicker than any of the other ports. They have a great inland port that is much more free from weather problems like in the Gulf Coast. And at times, they can go through the Panama Canal, and if that doesn't work, they have to go around the horn. So, all these things add up to, this is a win-win for the people in the area Coos Bay, which are desperately looking to recover from the spotted owl crisis 20 years ago, whatever it is. And their, their port up there needs to have some new project come in to keep their port open, and so they can actually do the work and the dredging that needs to be done to keep their port operable. And I believe that's why, perhaps, Seattle up there in that area, they just assume not see it happen, because if that port closes, it forces more business through their ports. So, I think this is a very important thing for Western Colorado and Eastern Utah, and even Southern, Southeast, or Southwestern, Idaho, Wyoming. And we can, and to, to help the people have affordable, clean energy in Japan is, we'll have a lot of good trade relations with those folks to do that. I mean, this will help them get out of a less, or a cleaner burning fuel to produce electricity. And overall, it's, it's an advantage to whoever we can ship it to. It's a, it's a good thing for Coos Bay, Oregon, and all of Western Colorado. So, and these jobs would be, would give the industry a steady supply, or orders to ship the gas, and I think it's a good situation for Western Colorado and Coos Bay, Oregon, and the Orient, for that matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Justman. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to appro, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner McGinnis, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So?
Okay. I'm in favor, or you moved, is there a second, Commissioner Justman?
Yes.
Okay. I'm in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, commissioners. We have no briefing items today. Is there any unscheduled business to come before this board? Unscheduled? Anybody that wants to talk to us? All right. Seeing this hearing spread.